There's a couple adds on the agenda tonight that we have several speakers showing up for, so we want to make sure they have ample opportunity. Next thing on our agenda is election of the officers for the coming calendar year.
Greg, can I jump in for a minute?
Sure, Joe.
You should do a roll call and make sure the people indicate where they are located.
You want, okay.
A forum.
All right, we'll change the order here, do introductions first. So I'm Greg Russell, I'm the present chair of the zoning board of appeals and I'll call on Zoom tonight from Destin, Florida. Bill?
So I had unmute Bill Rockwell, member of the zoning board of appeals, calling in on Zoom tonight from my home here in Genoa Township.
Michelle?
Michelle Kreutzberg, member of the zoning board of appeals from Brighton, Michigan.
Jean?
Hi, excuse me, I'm Jean Leford, trustee on the board and a member of the zoning board of appeals, calling from home.
Mary Ann?
Mary Ann McCurry, member of the zoning board of appeals.
Michelle Kreutzberg, member of the zoning board of appeals from Brighton, Michigan.
Jean?
Hi.
My name's Amy Ruthig, calling from Genoa Township Hall.
And a member of the zoning board of appeals, calling from home.
Mary Ann?
Sorry, there's a delay in some of this. I was, is anybody else getting a delay?
Yes.
Yeah, right, I am, I am.
Yes.
So my, I'm Mary Ann McCurry, I'm a member of the zoning board of appeals and the planning commission, I am here in frigid Genoa Township.
All right, and who else needs introductions? Kelly, Patty, and Joe, let's go in that order.
Kelly Van Rutter, Genoa Township, Michigan.
Patty Thomas. Patty Thomas, recording secretary in Brighton, Michigan.
Joe Seward, calling in from White Lake, Michigan, I am the township attorney.
Okay, I believe that takes care of everyone on staff that's here tonight, correct? Seeing no jinx, all right, now we will come to election of officers. Currently on the chair, Mary Ann, the vice chair, and there's only two positions.
Okay, I nominate Greg Russell as chair of the zoning board of appeals.
I second that nomination, Bill Rockwell.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, now we need a nomination for vice chair.
Jean Leford nominates Mary Ann McCurry as the vice chair of the zoning board of appeals.
I'll second the nomination.
It's a second by Michelle. Any, do I have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, moving on, great, we've got a board chair and vice chair for next year. All right, the next item on our agenda is approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda or any modifications?
Leford moves approval.
Support from McCurry.
Okay, motion with support, is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, now, we come to the call to the public, is there anyone here to speak tonight or present tonight, online or otherwise, who wishes to speak to an item that is not on the agenda? If you're here to speak to an item that is on the agenda, you will have an opportunity during the call to the public after the presentation of each of those items. So at this time, I will open call to the public for any item not on the agenda. Mary, if you can show the phone number again, that would be helpful. We'll wait a minute here, see if anyone attempts to call in.
Here we go.
Always feel like I'm at a telephone. Did I hear a phone ring? Was that somebody else's phone in the background?
Hey, hung up.
Okay. All right. We've waited a minute for anyone to call in for general call to the public. So I will close the general call to the public, if someone should call in, we can always reopen it. So we'll close call to the public and move on to our first item on the agenda. First item on the agenda is case 2102, a request by Lawrence Zeluski of 4480 Golf Club Road for a side yard setback variance to construct in addition to an existing family home. I asked that the applicant tonight, please address the four, four conditions that will enable us to easily grant or deny the variance. You must demonstrate the practical difficulty of the property to board and how the appeal would grant you substantial justice. You must explain the extraordinary circumstances that are found on the property that are different from neighboring properties, how granting the appeal would be a benefit to the public safety and welfare, and how granting the appeal would not interfere or interfere and impact the neighborhood. Please address those four items during your presentation, make sure, because those are the key items that we're looking for to grant you your variance. So, is there anyone here from Mr. Zeluski? Yeah, I apologize for butchering your name.
It's okay. Zeluski?
Go ahead, sir.
Okay, yes, I'm Larry Zeluski from Zeluski Construction, and I'm the builder for Diane Murdock. And she's elderly, and had a architect come over and try to situate a bedroom with a bathroom. And due to the floor elevation in the house existing, it was hard to get a bathroom in anywhere without staying on that side. So we were hoping to add an eight by 12 approximately addition off the back southeast corner. But come to find out, the existing house is two and a half feet approaching the lot line, or approaching too close. So, uh, we're not going any closer, we're just asking if we can extend it. Eight feet.
Okay, all right, anything else you'd like to answer before I will board member have any questions, and we'll start with Mary Ann, do you have any questions?
The only thing that's changing is just moving the the same sidewall that is on the eastern side of the property that you're, you were stating is two and a half feet short of the setback, you're going straight back off of that and extending an area that's 12 by nine, and that's about eight and a half feet. But you're staying on that same sideline setback, correct?
Correct.
It's the only question that I had, thank you.
Okay, Michelle?
Don't, you explained that is the only place in the house that is conducive to you putting in that bathroom and bedroom based on the floor plan?
Yeah.
Okay.
Due to the also, the elevations of the floor, if you notice, on the house, there was that was added on at a later date from existing house, and the elevations dropped down three steps.
Okay, thank you.
Bill?
No questions.
Well, yeah, I was wondering, what is the square footage of the addition? It's 12 by nine, 12 by eight, what is, what is the square footage?
Uh, yeah, it'd be by approximately 100 square feet.
And you said you're the builder?
Yes.
I didn't get your name, sir.
Larry Zeluski.
Okay, thank you, that's all the questions I have.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, seeing other questions from the board I have done. So at this time, we'll open the call to the public, is there anyone here to speak tonight regarding the case of 22, 2102? So at this time, we'll open the call, open the phone lines and see if there's anyone who wants to speak on this item tonight. Larry, if you could throw out the number again?
I believe Commissioner Leford, that the page 14 of the package, in, if you're looking at your iPad, shows the new foundation that the architect, Mr. Coats, has, has put in there, and it shows the outside dimension of eight and a half, and the width is 12, it says 12 foot nine inches.
Eight and a half by what?
12 feet nine inches, and that's the exterior dimensions from, from the architectural rendering.
Okay, I was looking at the sketch and I just wasn't able to decipher the numbers.
Right.
We will close call to the public at this time and bring it back up to the board for decision on this item.
I would put forward a motion to approve case 2102, a request by Lawrence Zeluski for Diane Murdock of 4480 Golf Club Road for a variance of two feet six inches from the required side yard setback of 30 feet to 27 feet six inches for construction of an addition to an existing single family home based on the following findings of fact. Strict compliance with the side yard setback would prevent the applicant from constructing the addition in the proposed location. The variance provides substantial justice, as there are some homes in the surrounding area with non-conforming side yard setbacks on similarly sized narrow lots. Extraordinary circumstances of the property is the existing location of the home, the narrowness of the lot, and the location of the septic field. It appears to be the least amount necessary, and the variance is not self-created. Regarding public safety and welfare, the granting of the variance will not impair an adequate supply of light and air to adjacent property or in ways to locally increase the congestion in public streets or increase the danger of fire or endanger the public safety, comfort, morals, or welfare of the inhabitants of the township of Genoa. Impact on the surrounding neighborhood, the proposed variance would have little or no impact on the appropriate development, continued use, or value of adjacent properties in the surrounding neighborhood. I don't have any required conditions for that, and that would be my proposal.
We have a motion?
I would second the motion.
Second by Michelle, is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call to the vote, and I am 2102, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, congratulations, sir, you have your, your variance. You can stick around and stay online and watch the rest of the meeting, or you can check out.
Well, I'll check out, but thank you for the question, have a nice evening.
Great, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, our next item on the agenda is case 2103, a request by Jeffrey A. Anderson of 1627 Green Meadow Drive for a side, front, and rear yard setback variance to construct a new home. I see Miss Anderson is here, Mr. Anderson is here, so go ahead and ask why you feel this variance is wrong.
Good evening, my name's Jeffrey Anderson, I'm here with my wife Denise. Denise will be doing the reading tonight, because I could ramble on the rest of the night, and I don't think you want to hear that.
We're requesting the variance to replace our existing 1965 mobile home on the property. We live in Lathrop Village right now, and we would like to move back to the Brighton area, we both grew up in the Brighton area. And to take this 12 by 52 off the lot, that's only 624 square feet, we want to put on a 15 by, 15 two by 66 with 1,003 square feet. That is our proposed, what we would like to do.
Okay, questions from board members, we'll start with Bill this time.
Actually, if you could come back to me, I'm just still trying to pull up my images here for
Yes, I have several, thank you Denise, first of all, the the home, the home that you have there right now, how many bedrooms is that?
Two.
So the home that you have proposed is also two, correct? So I just wanted to confirm with you that if, because typically for your septic, the health department is going to require it based on your bedroom, so I just want to make sure you confirm with the health department that there's not going to be any changes.
We already did, and we also had all the septic in the well and everything taken care of, we've gone ahead and done that. And this is the drain field. Everything's up to par.
So it will, it will comply with your proposed model that you have submitted?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great, and then are you, is this, this, this home is longer than the one that's currently sitting on there, right?
Correct.
So are you putting this on a, what kind of, are you putting this on a foundation, or what's happening with the foundation that's there currently?
I think we're, we're just going to do peers again, like what it's on now.
Okay, so it's going to be put on peers?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so it's not going to be, it's not going to be permanent?
No.
Okay.
We'd like it to be permanent, it's not going anywhere once it gets there, but yes, it's on peers.
All right, I just wanted, for purposes of financing and, and, you know, options like that, there sometimes requirements for resale purposes, if it has to be on a permanent foundation, you have to have an engineer, a structural engineer to look at it, so just want to make sure you are aware that those were options for you for, for the future.
Yes, ma'am.
You're putting it on peers, okay. Um, and the other item, I, um, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to say here, in the memorandum for the requests, it states that the request, they're just asking for a side yard setback variance. And I, I believe we're asking for a side yard, a rear yard, and a front yard, is that correct?
We're asking for three.
For three, so in the request for the memorandum, I just wanted to make a notation that it, it probably should also include, include front and rear, just as a note for, for future reference.
Okay, all right, Michelle?
Um, I'm basing this on the information that we have, the home that you have is not conforming as far as the estates are concerned?
Correct.
Okay. And that's all I had, I was, I see that you're going side, front, and rear.
Well, it's really, it's the, the rear is just staying where it is now.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that's where it's existing, because your septic is in the, in the, in the rear, and you have
And the one side is also staying as is.
Right.
Really one side and the front.
Okay, thank you.
Jean?
No, no questions, thank you.
Bill? Yeah, actually, I guess just the one thing I was wondering, when I was there, and the front yard in front of the garage is a well?
Correct. Out by the road, yes.
I'm, I'm sorry?
By the road.
Okay, just, just from a logistics standpoint, is this counted as a structure that we need to have any concerns about, I guess I'm just looking, and I, so far in my time on the zoning board, haven't seen an actual kind of Rockwell structure.
We've never seen it before either. It was existing when we moved there.
Okay, and just from a standpoint of modifying the property, is there any concern, and this is more of a question to Amy, that we need to make with respect to an open sealed or closed Rockwell?
That would be handled through Livingston County Environmental Health.
Okay.
So they'll have to go there when they apply for their building permits. That will be one of the many permits they're going to have to get.
Okay. Okay, all right, so from our side as a township, we don't have any requirement about filling in or removing or doing anything with regards to a structure such as that?
You could, if you feel comfortable, you can make a motion that they have to follow Livingston County Environmental Health guidelines, but they have to do that anyways in order to get the permit.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's already umbrellaed under, so, okay.
Okay, all right, no more questions from the board, I'll open public comment at this time, look, if you can put the number back up, we'll wait a minute if anyone wishes to call in on tonight's item 2103.
Luke, I do not think that that is correct, there's, I believe they're supposed to call the township or email info@genoa.org.
I don't hear Luke, we find, eh?
Has anybody tried calling that number, that 312?
Amy, that probably calls them right into the Zoom meeting, so that would pop up as a participant, and I think Luke and the folks at American Video could then let them in, it's a little bit different than the way we've been doing the hearings, but I still think that's an appropriate way for people to comment.
Okay, I did, I did have one call, and the gentleman hung up, Adam has been, the other person has been talking to someone through YouTube, who was watching them, and he was trying to get it through, through to that number, and he said it was busy, so Adam informed him to call the township or try info@genoa.org, and I haven't received anything.
Looks like we do have a caller in the meeting.
So who's that picking him up?
Yeah, I'm just wondering whose, whose number that is.
And I asked to un-
You want, what do you want to do, Amy?
He is muted right now.
So you want to unmute someone calling in?
Yeah, we have one caller there, maybe unmute and just see which hearing that you're here for.
Let's unmute him and see who he is.
Well, I just asked to unmute, so we'll see.
Good evening, sir, please state your name and address.
Still muted.
He's still muted right now.
Last four digits of your phone number are 1783.
There we go.
Hello?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I don't have a- My name is Ralph Slider.
Okay.
I'm in 3470 Pine Ridge, I was not trying to ask a question, for some reason you have me noted as trying to ask a question, I'm not.
Right, so you're calling in for your next item, correct, sir?
Yep.
Yes, sir, yeah.
Okay, all right, we'll mute you again at this time, if you mute yourself, we'll go back.
Thank you, I can mute myself, and, so, thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Slider, you're on our screen, I have you on our screen twice.
Okay, so we'll close private comment for case 2103 and bring it back up to the board for discussion and decision.
I would motion, if you'd like. A motion to approve case number 2103, submitted by Jeffrey Anderson of 1627 Green Meadow Drive, granting a front yard setback of 24 feet for a variance of 11 feet, a rear setback of 35 feet for a variance of five feet, and a side setback of six foot five inches for a variance of 3.5 feet to replace or construct a new conforming home. Strict compliance with the setbacks would unreasonably restrict use of property. This variance will provide substantial justice in granting applicant the same rights as similar properties in the neighborhood. It is not self-created, as there are many homes in the surrounding area with non-conforming setbacks. Extraordinary circumstances being the location of the accessory structure, septic field, and the narrowness of the lot. This, this variance would make the property consistent with other properties or homes in the area. Public safety and welfare, these would not impair adequate light or air to adjacent properties, would not increase congestion or increase danger of fire or threaten public safety or welfare. Proposed variance would have little or no impact on the appropriate development, continued use, or value of adjacent properties in the surrounding neighborhood. Recommended conditions, structure must be guttered with downspouts. The applicant shall be required to completely remove the detached accessory structure once the existing home is removed under the following conditions. A, if permit to construct the new principal residence is not issued within six, six months of his ZBA decision, and/or if the applicant fails to obtain final occupancy certification from the Livingston County Building Department within one year of land use permit issuance. C, township staff shall have discretion to approve extensions to the above deadlines under the, I'm sorry, under proven special or extenuating circumstances, but in no case shall that extension exceed six months for item A, or 12 months for item B. Number three, if improvements are requested for the expansion of the current accessory building, they shall comply with section 240406 of the zoning ordinance. And then Bill, did you, did we want to include anything in regard to the well, we don't have to at this point for occupancy?
It's covered, I'm, I'm fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a motion, do I have support?
Jean Leford supports.
Got motion support, is there any further discussion? That motion is for, is there any further discussion on the item?
Discussion, is it, would the maker of the motion be amenable to including the required setbacks for the variances, for the side, front and rear?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
So the side is a required of ten feet, the front is a required of thirty-five feet, and the rear is a required of forty feet.
I support that too.
Okay, I have an amendment to the motion. Patty, did you get all that?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion. Is there any further discussion? One, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? No one's opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Anderson, you're granted. You can stay on for the rest of the meeting or you can check out. Check out if you'd like.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is a request by Ralph Slider thirty-four seventy Pine Ridge Lane for an appeal of an administrative decision for section twenty-three point zero-two point zero-one returning the required waterfront setbacks. At this time, I'm gonna ask Mr. Seward, counsel for the township, to give us a brief summary of the opinion that was included in the packet. Mr. Seward.
Well, thank you, Chairman. Yes, this is an appeal by Mr. Slider of a decision by the zoning administrator to deny the land use permit. And instead suggesting that they need to seek a variance. Section twenty-three oh two oh one of the township ordinance does allow for appeals before this body, the, the zoning board of appeal. The sliders have to meet one of four criteria, at least one of four criteria. And that is set in section twenty-three oh five oh two. And the criteria are, was the decision by the zoning administrator arbitrary or capricious? Was the decision based on an erroneous finding of material fact? Or constituted an abuse of discretion? Or was based on an erroneous interpretation of the zoning ordinance or zoning law? Now, I was provided a copy of a letter from Andrew Babnick, the attorney for the sliders. And as I understand the nature of their appeal, it follows two paths. The first one is that the decision was arbitrary and capricious. The second one is that the zoning administrator made an error in the interpretation of the zoning ordinance.
Breaking up, Joe.
I'm sorry. The second one was that the zoning administrator made an error in the interpretation of the zoning ordinance or zoning law. The way that, I'm gonna address the arbitrary and capriciousness first. There, the slider argument is that section eleven oh four oh five says what can be waterfront accessory structures. And then it applies to, you know, this, the, the section are permitted on waterfront structures, but they're limited to docks and mooring apparatus decks and no more than one gazebo. On the other hand, they've done a survey of the lake and I believe others, and there's a number of flagpoles, fire pits and steps which are found in the waterfront yard. And if the ordinance was strictly construed as set forth in eleven point oh four oh five, those structure, those would constitute structures under the ordinance. And that by not enforcing the ordinance for these other property owners, the township, the zoning administrators being arbitrary and capricious, but not affording the same permission as the slider's request. Now, I cited in my letter to everyone case law that says that a township is not a stop, is not prohibited from enforcing its ordinances even though there have been past situations where the ordinance wasn't enforced the same way as it is now. I raised that, not to say that that is a final decision or that this board must follow the case law. I only set that out that if you believe that the decision by the zoning administrator was not arbitrary and capricious, the law does not require a different decision. On the other hand, this board could find that, that decision was arbitrary and capricious. It is up to this body to make that decision. The second path that the sliders take is that the zoning ordinance was improperly interpreted. Now, they go through a rather long analysis. And there's a fundamental disagreement as to their interpretation. When deciding what was the intent, what was the applicability of the ordinance? I do draw the members of the ZBA to a provision in the ordinance at section one point oh five oh one, which states that if there's a conflict between provisions in the zoning ordinance, the provisions or standards which are more restrictive, more restrictive or limiting shall govern. So that's the overall, overall philosophy of the township's view of its zoning ordinance. Now, the slider's position is that.
Did we lose some members?
Is that because of.
Michelle or Jean up there either.
I'm, I'm here. I'm here.
Okay.
Use us, Ralph.
So, Mr. Babnick pick up, points out that in the section eleven point oh four oh one G, when the general provisions, the general dimensional standards for the township are set forth, the ordinance specifically only refers to a detached accessory buildings when talking about setbacks from the shoreline. Whereas in the beginning of the ordinance and other places, it talks about accessory buildings and structures. So they pick up on the fact that the word structure is not included in section eleven point oh four oh one G. That was purposeful not to include any, anything but a building. And a pool, by definition used in article or chapter twenty-five, a pool does not constitute a building. It doesn't have, what they're proposing does not have a roof. It does not fit the definition of a building. So they then go on to the provision that talks about pools. And that is eleven point oh four oh one subparagraph F, which basically places a ten-foot setback that the pool has to be at least ten feet from the principal building and at least ten feet from a side lot line. And what they are proposing would fit that definition. They contend that the table in three point oh four oh two does not apply to them for these reasons. But they also go on to suggest that even if section three point oh four oh two applies, that it sets forth a distinct, a different and distinct setbacks for the principal structure as a, as compared to an accessory structure. They seem to agree that under table three point oh four oh two, for the principal building, their house, it has to be at least forty feet from the shoreline or consistent with the setback of the adjacent principal buildings, whichever is greater. So they acknowledge that their house has to meet that. On the other hand, when looking at the definition of yard and front yard in chapter twenty-five, they take the position that when it says the front yard, that the front yard, it's the minimum. And so they focus, they go back to three point oh four oh two. And when they look at using the definition of waterfront yard and the minimum, they focus on only those three words in chapter or table three point oh four oh two, which is a minimum of forty feet. They take the position that the phrase or consistent with setbacks adjacent to principal buildings, whichever is greater, does not apply. And that's the crux of the erroneous decision by the zoning administrator. Is it the intent of table three point oh four oh two, minimum of forty feet or consistent with the setback of the adjacent principal building? Does that apply in also defining what the waterfront setback should be? If it is the forty feet or the adjacent principal buildings, whichever is greater, then their pool encroaches upon the required yard. And under eleven, chapter eleven, it's not a structure that is permitted to be in the waterfront yard. Now, the one thing I did, I don't think I mentioned in my letter, and it's just something that I looked, I, I read again tonight, is that section eleven point oh four oh three, subparagraph four says that swimming pools shall not be located in any front yard. And interestingly, the definition in chapter twenty-five of yard under subparagraph A says front yards. And then it, it says and goes on, and the yard adjoining the shoreline shall be considered the waterfront yard. So one could also look at the definition of front yard and a waterfront property would have two front yards under that definition. If that's the intent, if that's how the ordinance is to be applied, this would be another basis upon which to say that the pool is just not allowed in a front yard. So that's my understanding of the slider appeal based upon the letter from Mr. Babnick. If you have any questions, I will try to answer them as best I can.
Amy or Kelly, do you, either of you have anything to add?
Mr. Seward did an excellent job. I don't have anything additional.
Okay, do any board members, I'm gonna go around the table. Any board members have questions for Mr. Seward? Before we hear the presentation of the case from the applicant. Mary Ann?
No.
Bill?
No.
Michelle?
No.
Jean?
No.
Yeah, I have none either. Mr. Slider, are you, are you here or you're representing here to speak?
Yeah, I'll be speaking, I'll be speaking on behalf of Mr. Slider, his attorney Andrew Babnick.
Okay.
So I thank the board again for having us. I want to, you know, briefly, I'm sure we've all been lulled to sleep unfortunately when attorneys talk, Joe. It's, we're starting to cite, I'll try to simplify it a little bit for everybody so I don't play lawyer here too much. Joe and I have talked this at nauseam unfortunately. I want to address just quickly that new argument on the front yard, side yard, rear yard issue. Just to remind the board, the board found at the ZBA hearing in November's minutes that the waterfront yard is not by definition the front yard and that the, the ordinance supports that a waterfront yard, you wouldn't have two front yards in the property. And the ZBA actually found definitively in its minutes that a pool could be contained in the waterfront yard, just not in the required yard. So if that, I just want to kind of get that out of the way initially, because I know it's a new argument that's been brought up, but it would contradict with the ZBA already found in its minutes of meetings in November and confirmed again in December's minutes. As the board will recall, at nauseam, and again, I'm gonna try not to cite too many statutes here and summarize my argument. I think Joe did a wonderful job, but let me sort of simplify it a little bit to get a less of the legal jargon and more of the practical. My clients have appeared at multiple meetings initially seeking a variance to build a pool on the property. He was told a variance was required based on the interpretation of a required versus non-required yard. Let me be clear, this has very little to do with a pool, as, as Mr. Seward had pointed out. This has an issue of what can be built in the required yard and how we define the required yard. There's no argument, we agree, Joe and I, and I'm sorry, I'm gonna keep informally referring to you as Joe. I hope nobody minds. Joe, I hope you don't mind. There's no dispute here that you cannot build in the required yard. You cannot put anything in the ordinance except for docks, mooring apparatuses and a deck. That's not within dispute. The problem is the definition of the required yard. And that is where the erroneous interpretation and the arbitrary and capricious come into play. To remind the board, as outlined in the memo provided by Mr. Seward, the ZBA denied Mr. Slider the variance that he requested claiming that he was building in the required waterfront yard. They found additionally that he had presented only one example of a pool that was built in the waterfront yard and the ZBA acknowledged the fact, as did the administrator at our meeting outside of the ZBA, that that one property was issued in error. It would be in non-compliance. The only problem is since that time and part of our packet here, we've shown not only additional pools built in what the ZBA and what the administrator is defining as the waterfront yard, but as Mr. Seward pointed out, multiple, multiple, multiple violations or what would be non-conforming uses from flagpoles, from fire pits, from all of these things that are deemed structures under the ordinance and could not be built in the waterfront yard. There's two easy ways to explain that. Either the current application of my client is improper or you, the zoning administrator has allowed everybody else to build, the ZBA has passed variances for all of these things, which most of them were passed without a variance, and only my guy is being singled out. I highly doubt that that is true, that he's being solely singled out, but that's the only way to jive the explanation or the interpretation of the ordinance that the administrators put forward. And the fact that all of these other properties would be non-conforming. And I, I don't want to get into an argument over case law. Joe and I will have to do that if this goes to a lawsuit down the road. If we appeal the variance denial and appeal a denial if it were to come today. But the case law that he cited deals with commercial properties where they had permitted a commercial use when they shouldn't have permitted one and then denied the commercial use moving forward. So I don't think the case law is totally on point here. What we have here is one guy who singled out because this came to ZBA hearing and a public hearing where neighbors said, we don't want the pool. We think it'll make, we've heard everything from it'll make noise to it'll void the sightline, which makes little sense considering a variance was granted for my client to put a retaining wall which would have more of a. a retaining wall, which would have more of an impact on sightline than a pool would, especially when the ordinance is pretty clear that it would allow, even in a non-required or in the required yard, it would allow a deck, it would allow other structures that are taller than a pool. What we have here is we don't have a conflict. I agree with Joe 100%. If there are two restrictions, two conflicts in the statute or in an ordinance, you need to take the more restrictive. But a ZBA and an administrator cannot create a conflict where one doesn't exist. You can't compare apples to oranges and just say, well, we're taking a setback that's higher. It's been stated over and over again since we've been here that the non-required yard or required yard needs to match the setback of the principal structure. There's no support for that within the ordinance whatsoever. And the ZBA noted in the 12, five minutes that nothing can be built in the required yard except for the decks, the moorings, and the docks. So this is why I stress very clearly, this isn't about a pool. What we provided are additional examples of pools to negate the fact that they said, oh, it's just one pool and we don't have substantial justice on a variance. But there's multiple examples outside of the pools and they all qualify as structures. And you cannot argue and say, well, a pool is different than a fire pit. Not in your zoning ordinance, they're all defined as statutes or structures, I'm sorry. A pool is defined as a structure, which is distinct from a building, and Mr. Seward pointed that out and it's very important. As noted by the attorney, the structure under which the ordinance will include fire pits, it'll include retaining walls, everything which we now see in properties is non-conforming uses, which have been passed either by the administrator or with variances or even without variances. And yes, while you don't have to enforce an ordinance if you've never enforced it before, you cannot selectively choose to enforce it against Mr. Slider and then continue to allow non-conforming uses based on a changing or varying interpretation of what non-required yard is. Definition of a required yard is that it corresponds to the minimum setback in the district. That's word for word from the ordinance. Corresponds to the minimum setback in the district. The administrator and the ZBA interpretation is that the minimum setback is the same as the principal structure. And I, again, that's not in the ordinance. I agree that nowhere does the ordinance provide this. While the law and the ordinance say that you have to take more restrictive means when there's a conflict, if there's no conflict in the ordinance, we can't read one in. In fact, the administrator has created a conflict through this interpretation. And as I said, not only existing, but think of the future burden on the administrator. If this is the definition of a required yard, then moving forward, if that's what the board supports here again today, every flagpole, fire pit, anything that's defined as a structure that appears in what they're defining as the required yard, which exceeds what we say is the minimum in the district, is a floating required yard, you're going to be inundated with needs for variances, or the administrator is going to continue to allow non-conforming uses and singling out Mr. Slider. The proper interpretation, and the one that eliminates dozens of non-compliant uses, is that the required yard setback for the LRR district where my client is located mirrors the minimum setback for the district. The minimum setback for the district is forty feet. And I can even argue, bringing up a different argument, that 130204 provides the minimum in the district, which is the 25-foot setback from the MDCQ regulated water and water body sections of the ordinance. Minimum setback means the minimum. Let's talk about what Mr. Seward said and the most important thing, what's the intent of the ordinance? Why do we have this required versus non-required yard? And the ZBA commented on it in October's minutes. The whole purpose of this was to prevent sightline interference from neighboring properties on the waterfront property. Waterfront property is very unique from everything else within the Genoa Township, obviously. We want to protect that. But to say that the required yard is going to float and change and increase, and in this sense, match the principal structure, it would prevent my client from having any yard whatsoever that he could build in. He couldn't put a flagpole, he couldn't put a pool. And again, it makes no sense from an arbitrary and capricious standpoint, because if the intent of the ordinance is not to affect sightlines, and we've already approved a variance for the retaining walls, how does a pool impact that? Again, Mr. Seward's letter and our analysis align in the sense that they correctly highlight the intent of the ordinance is key here. The ZBA has already outlined that the intent was to protect the sightline. The proper interpretation set forth by my office complies with that goal. Additionally, it prevents all of these properties from being non-conforming. It's very hard to say that the proper interpretation here is one that prevents my client from being able to build the pool, but also places dozens of other properties in non-conforming use. You cannot read ambiguity where one does not exist. The correct interpretation, as pointed out, brings everyone in compliance and creates no conflict.
Thank you, Mr. Babnik.
Hold on, I just have a few more quick.
Oh, okay, all right. Sorry, I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing your little picture on the screen, so I.
I apologize. Trust me, I got a face made for radio. You don't want to see me anyway. You know what, to summarize, because I don't want to keep blabbing on and going back and forth about the ordinance. The argument here is not that my client is looking for a technicality within the ordinance. It's looking for the equal treatment within the ordinance. And there's a contradiction between the ZBA saying that there was no substantial justice, that there's no issue here, that the required yard is as it's defined by the administrator, and therefore you can't build in the required yard. I agree, you cannot build within the required yard without a variance. But the problem is, is that definition of required yard conflicts with everything that the zoning administrator has done up to this point and everything that the ZBA has done up to this point. And I understand that pools are not something that frequently comes up. The administrator has admitted that in our meeting. And the expression that's come out is, you know, if we had a beautification exception, that this is so beautiful, we'd approve it right away, that's not needed. When there are conflicts in the statute, you must go to the most restrictive. But nobody has been able to point out why the required yard would have to match the principal building setback. There's clearly a difference between a building and a structure. That's not an attorney hyper-technical reading. That's a requirement in the definition section. Section 25 of this ordinance provides clear-cut definitions. And you can't read an ambiguity where one doesn't exist. So for that reason, we're asking the board to find that the administrator's ruling on what the required yard is was erroneous. This would bring all the other properties that already exist into compliance and would allow my client to build within the non-required yard, as long as he doesn't violate that required yard setback. Now I'm done, Greg.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Seward. Okay, at this time, we'll go up to the board, and if they have questions for either Mr. Seward or Mr. Babnik, address them at this time, and just make sure that you address the question to the appropriate individual. Mary Ann?
I have no questions for either party or my pool.
Bill? Any questions, Bill?
All right, muted. I have no questions either at this time.
Michelle? Michelle?
I'm here, sorry. I do not have any questions.
Jean?
I wish I did have questions, but I'm so overwhelmed with both attorneys, I can't think of anything offhand.
Okay, I'm sure there'll be an opportunity. I have no questions either. The summaries are very good. At this time, I will open public comment for those in the public who wish to speak on item. Those calling in tonight, we are not going to get into give and take and answer questions. You can make your comments, and your questions you ask will be. We're not going to answer your questions tonight. They'll be. But you can address your questions, but you won't get an answer on your questions tonight. Okay, so at this time, we'll open up the public hearing for this case or this appeal. So wait a minute and see who calls in.
Joe, did we lull the public to sleep?
It certainly sounds like it.
Okay, so no one has called in, nobody's waiting. I'll close public comment for this item and bring it back up to the board for a decision on the appeal. Are we need a motion tonight to either deny the appeal or grant the appeal and state the grounds on which we're granting the appeal? Is that correct? Amy, Joe, is that what we're looking for?
Yes, if you're going to grant the appeal, you have to indicate the basis. If you deny the appeal, you just say that you denied it because the applicant didn't meet its, his burden.
Okay, all right, so I'll bring it back up to the board for discussion. Discussion, other question?
Mr. Chair, I just have a comment. Having read and reread and reread and heard both councils' opinions on as we sit today, I continue to keep same mindset as I have had since we have started this variance. I just would ask that any other members of the board, if they have an opinion otherwise, would express any concern or comment.
Okay, does anyone else have any comments? I understand. Mary Ann's going ahead. Does anyone else have any comments?
My only comment, this is Michelle Cruttsburg, was that all, all of our decisions were based under the ordinances that we were given, the parameters that we were given and decided upon over these several months. And that is where I come to my conclusions.
Okay, does anyone else have any other comments? All right, do we have a motion one way or the other?
Mr. Chair, I will make a motion. And as Council Seward had indicated, there are four criterias. One of any four can be utilized to state that the appeal should be granted to reverse. The first one is, was it arbitrary or capricious? Was there something sudden or unaccountable change that changed the behavior or the mood of the ZBA? Was there an erroneous finding of any material facts? The third one was, did it constitute an abuse of discretion? And the fourth was, is there an erroneous interpretation of the zoning ordinance or the zoning law? In an effort for the applicant to request their variances for both the pool and the landscaping, both the applicant, the applicant's representatives, township officials, township council, and the applicant's council, as well as the zoning board of appeals, have spent an inordinate amount of time reviewing and analyzing the request for the variances of a pool and landscaping. In addition, public comments have also been heard and considered in each occasion regarding the request for these variances. None of these meetings, dialogues, or analysis of the requests have been taken lightly or discarded at any time by the zoning board, and for that matter, staff and officials. The ordinance in place are what we utilize as the tool to apply for variances that are not self-created, have the least requested, and will not cause harms to the residents or surrounding properties in the township. In fact, four meetings were held to discuss these variance requests. And at the request of the township manager, one entire meeting was held for the purposes of the ZBA to interpret section of the ordinance as applies to 110403, 110401, 110405, and 230203. This request was to identify how each of these sections related to swimming pools, required waterfront yards, required waterfront setbacks, and retaining wall setbacks. The outcome of the discussions resolved in the following. All commissioners agreed that a swimming pool can be put in a waterfront yard, not in a front yard, and if it's in the waterfront, it cannot be in the required waterfront setbacks. And please refer to table 030402 as it applies to this. As the members of the board have each had time when calling for a vote, all identified that this variance for the pool was denied. And I see no arbitrary or capricious nature as we have applied this to both the applicant and the definition of the way the ordinance is written. And further, I see no correlation with any of the four criteria that would deem this appeal reversible. My motion is to deny the request for the administrative appeal based on the facts forementioned. That's my motion.
I support that. Ledford supports that motion.
Motion to support, discussion. Well, I thank Mary Ann for summarizing that very clearly. I think that was the intent of all the board members when they joined to the discussion in our hearing of this appeal over the last, or request for variance over the last few months. Because there's no other discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of denial of the deal, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Seeing no one opposed, it passes 5-0. Okay, that takes care of the case. I mean, Mr. Slider, Mr. Babnik, thank you very much. You can continue to stay on or do our administrative business.
Appreciate you the time. Thank you, board.
Okay, next on our agenda is approval of the minutes for the January 19, 2021 zoning board of appeals meeting.
Ledford, I have, Ledford, I have a couple of corrections. Okay, on page one, the very bottom paragraph, member Cruttsburg made a motion. At the second line from the bottom, it reads, "A concrete slab and a lean-to." The lean-to should be hyphenated in order to avoid, to add the word to avoid. Second page. Case 21-01, it's the third bullet. It should read, "The granting of the variance will not impair an adequate supply of light or air." And then go on to say where increased congestion.
Excuse me, Jean?
Yes.
That is not how Board Member Cruttsburg gave that. Gives her motion. She changes the requested motion. So she words it that way.
Okay, so that's not a correction?
I don't believe so, but Board Member Cruttsburg, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
If it should be, I can reword all of them that way. I had my own printed version of what I read, so I will add that if you believe it should be. Okay, well, no, 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 I'm saying for future reference, if that is not the correct way to provide that information, I'll change it.
Well, it seems to be appropriate, it's just not word for word for what is recommended, but it does seem to be appropriate how she writes her motions.
Right, I agree. But looking at the word increased congestion, I thought congestion of what? Or increased fire threatened? The wording is just.
That was supposed to be, if there's a comma between. I think that's all it needs. It does not.
Well, but can we just pick up the regular paragraph from the memorandum, the way it was worded?
Oh, wait a minute, maybe I still have it, if it's just was interpreted wrong, but.
Well, it seems to be, it seems to be standard with their. Well, it seems to be, it seems to be standard with every motion.
If that's not what she said, Jean, we have to go with what was said at the meeting. And Jean, if that's more, if it's helpful, I'll just go back to where I have some of your other motions, and I can just change that in the future if that's not coming, coming correct.
Like I said, it's a standard paragraph. Anyway, that's all I have.
Okay, does anyone else have any other corrections?
I have one. On page one of the minutes, Patty, the, the second to the last paragraph, it says, "This additional would allow them to store items." I think that should be this addition.
Got it, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other corrections? All right, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Motion to approve, Ledford.
Support.
Support by Mary Ann. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed. Correspondents?
We have.
I don't know if it should be noted, because I wasn't in the meeting, I abstained from the vote, correct?
No, you can still vote on the minutes, sir.
Oh, all right, well, come in as an aye.
Not yet.
Okay, correspondents?
We have two cases for next month already, for March 16th.
Okay, member discussion? I just want to thank Mr. Seward for coming tonight and his help with item number three tonight on the agenda.
Well, thank you, Greg. My pleasure.
And Mary Ann, thank you for so eloquently putting that together.
I had a lot of help from Kelly and Amy for sure.
Yes. Thank you all for your time and commitment on this, and I, as I stated, this, this variance was not taken lightly by any of us. We were spent an inordinate amount of time confirming that what we were doing was in compliance with the ordinances, so I appreciate each and every one of you, especially staff, that hang there with us, so.
Well, thank you for summarizing it so clearly, Mary Ann.
And thank you, Kelly, for being here tonight.
See, Kelly.
All right, does anyone else have any items for discussion? Okay, if that, I'll take a motion for adjournment, and we hopefully see you all next month, or hopefully in person.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion. Second by Michelle, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both, see y'all next month.
Just a note, it will be by, it will be by Zoom again.
Okay.
The order does not get lifted, hopefully, until March 21st.